Okay, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Reverend Dr. Chanterah Rumpf Carter from the Temple of Faith Bible Church out of Atlanta, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance if you would, please stand with me.
Let us bow our heads. God of all creation, we come to you today thanking you that we woke up on this side of heaven, Father God, because so many people did not wake up this morning. We want to just thank you that we woke up another day to serve you, Father God. We want to thank you for all that you have done for us, all that you will continue to do for us. Thank you for the leaders that you have chosen for us. Thank you for their servant leadership, Father God. Thank you for giving and sacrificing on our behalf, because we know that this is not their source, but a resource job, Father God. So we just thank you, and we ask that you bless them financially, bless their personal lives, bless their political lives, Father God. Let them know that you are well, that you are pleased with their work, Father God. And then we ask that you bless everyone that has gathered here on today, Father God, because we know that they care for our community. So we want you to bless them and show them that you appreciate their servant to come today, Father God. And then finally, we ask that you show up in this meeting today. Show up and show out, Father God. Let, whether or not we're on the yay side or the nay side, let everyone here today know that we're on your side, because we are unified, Father God. And not only that, but we're listening to one another, we're respecting one another, and there's one agenda today, Father God. In Jesus' name we pray. Let all the people of God say amen.
Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, we lost one of our police officers the other day, Officer Terrence Callaway.
No! That's my high school classmate. Oh, my God.
He passed away due to a health condition. So please keep his family in prayer, and let's observe him on silence if you would, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the August 1st, 2017 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I would like to, at the request of the Clayton County Juvenile Court, allow a resolution that they are asking for us to accept the VOCA grant, which is the Victims of Crime Act Grant Program. They would like to be able to apply and accept, if granted, an award for eighty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-one with a twenty percent match to it. The urgency is, the submittal date is August 7th, and we will not convene again until August 15th. Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed, this unanimous.
Are there any further amendments?
Madam Clerk, I'd like to, I ask that we hold items thirty through thirty-four and thirty-six, the appointments to Development Authority, the Zoning Advisor Group, and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
With those opposed.
Nay.
Nay. Three, two, it passes.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
I'll suck it. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
Have two sets of minutes for approval. The first, the July 18, 2017 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
And the next is the July 18, 2017 Public Hearing Minutes.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motions, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Miss Chair.
Nay. I was abstaining.
Abstention.
One abstention.
I wasn't present.
That's correct.
The Board has two proclamations to present this evening. The first recognizes high school student Antonia Harding for being selected to perform at the Sydney Opera House in Sydney, Australia. Where Miss Antonia Harding, as long, as well as family and friends, please come forward as the Board members join you for the presentation of the proclamation.
Congratulations. I think John Claus put it out there for us all. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
How are you?
I'm doing really well. I've got the, I've got the.
All right, group, on a count of three. One, two, three. Put the proclamation forward. One, two, three. That time, one, two, and three.
And I neglected to ask, are there any school board members out there? Or if you actually donated to make sure that Antonia got to Australia, please stand if you donated. You see how the missus raised her hand, but it really takes a village, you know that? Clayton County recognizes Antonia Tony Harding, whereas Miss Antonia Harding is an outstanding sixteen-year-old high school student at Clayton County, Georgia's Martha Ellen Stillwell School of the Arts, and whereas Antonia was invited and selected by audition to perform at the Sydney Opera House in Sydney, Australia in July 2017. And whereas Antonia performed at Carnegie Hall in February of 2017 in the Honors Concert Corps Choir, directed by Dr. Jeffrey L. Ames, in his presentation by the Honors Performance Series. And whereas Antonia performed as a soloist in "How Can I Keep From Singing," American folk hymn arranged and directed by Ronald Stoffey. And whereas Miss Antonia Tony Harding has worked very hard to earn these awesome opportunities to display her talent on an international level. Now, therefore, I, Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on all citizens to join me in recognizing Miss Antonia Harding for her dedication to the field of the arts as an accomplished vocalist. And witness thereof, I have hereby to set my hand and seal, and cause the seal in Clayton County, Georgia to be affixed, this first day of August in the year 2017. Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner. This is so important, because even though I'm a Commissioner, I remember when you were just a young lady, you were a little bitty girl coming to Arts Clayton when I was directing the summer camp. So I had the privilege not only watching her grow and accomplish great things, but I'm so proud of you and your accomplishment academically as well. So please continue to wrap your arms around our community, around our mother, because I'm a product of just what you perceive. I would not be where I am today if it wasn't for great people like yourselves who supported Antonia. So please continue to support her, as well as other students. Give her another hand. And before our next one, if I can, real quick, I think Brenda's in the audience. Her grandbaby just won, what did your grandbaby win again?
A trip to France to play soccer.
And the last proclamation for this evening. Clayton County recognizes Lamont Langford of Young Glove Boxing Academy for making a change for the better, "One Kid at a Time," as presented by Commissioner Franklin Warner. It's not here.
Did I hold what you have? No, not from the proclamation. The Chief's presentation.
Okay. He's here, we'll have to get him next time.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, as my staff makes their way forward, I wanted to take a minute and formally present to you the results of our hearing that we had with the Commission on Fire Accreditation International this past week in Charlotte, North Carolina. Before I do that, though, I want to thank the staff before you, because without them, this would not have been possible, but more importantly, the three-hundred-and-ninety-two men and women of Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services who strap on a uniform every day and serve this community selflessly. So the Commission's findings are as follows. The Commission on Fire Accreditation International is dedicated to assisting the fire and emergency service agencies throughout the world in achieving excellence through self-assessment and accreditation in order to provide continuous quality improvement and the enhancement of service delivery to their communities. Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services, having met in full the requirements of the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, as witnessed by a team of their peers and members of the Commission, is hereby awarded the status of an accredited agency. And witness thereof, this accredited agency award is issued this 28th day of July in the year 2017, signed Chief Steve Westerman, Chairman, Commission on Fire Accreditation International. So thank you.
I wanted to explain, earlier people said, explain a little bit more. Tell, tell how, what a big deal this is, and how rare, and, you know, for you all to get this credit taken for putting it in labor terms.
Labor terms.
To put it simply, the Commission made up of peers from around the country, come in and they look at twenty-eight different facets of the service we provide, from our operations, to our personnel, to our policies, to our budgeting, to our finances. If it involves our service delivery, they review it. They then write a technical report to the Commission, and then they make a final determination. So out of the twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-some-odd fire departments in the United States, only two-hundred-and-thirty-three hold this distinction. So we are within the top two percent.
The Board now consider requests of Central Services Director Carol Rogers.
Good evening. I only have one item to present tonight. The first one is Recommendation for Award of RFP, but the only one, obviously, seventeen dash one zero four, which is Officiating Services for Athletic Programs for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation for award is to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specifications, which is Peach State Umpires Association LLC located in Jonesboro, Georgia. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation General Fund. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hamburg, second, the motion, are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
Thank you. The Board will now consider request of Central Services Director Carol Rogers.
Good evening. I only have one item to present tonight. The first one is Recommendation for Award of RFP, but the only one, obviously, seventeen dash one zero four, which is Officiating Services for Athletic Programs for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation for award is to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specifications, which is Peach State Umpires Association LLC located in Jonesboro, Georgia. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation General Fund. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hamburg, second, the motion, are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
Thank you. The Board will now consider request of Chief Financial Officer Ramona Bivins.
Please take them together, Ms. Bivins.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. I have eight items for your consideration this evening. We have three budget amendments and five requests for refunds. Budget Amendment two dash twenty-seventh for other general government, to amend in rental income to cover the payment of property taxes for property located at fifty-seven-eleven Jonesboro Road in Lake City, Georgia, in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Budget Amendment two dash three is for State Court Technology Fund, to amend in funds from the State Court Technology Fund balance in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, to purchase a digital security and surveillance camera system for the Herald R. Banky Justice Center per RFP seventeen dash one thirty-nine, approved by the BOC on seven eighteen seventeen. Budget Amendment two dash four is for E nine-one-one fund, to appropriate funds from the E nine-one-one fund balance in the amount of five hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, to carry forward funding for the Automatic Vehicle Location System for Clayton County Public Safety, approved on the June sixth, 2017 Board Meeting. We have a request for a refund check in the amount of five hundred dollars payable to Southern Demolition in care of Diana Roman in Riverdale, Georgia, to refund the demolition bond for permit BP two zero one six C six four five seven two eight five. We have a request for a refund in the amount of five hundred dollars payable to Charles Martin in Atlanta, Georgia, for refund of a demolition bond for permit BP dash twenty sixteen dash C six four four dash seventy-six forty-three. Request for refund check in the amount of five hundred dollars payable to Assurity in Conyers, Georgia, to refund the demolition bond for permit BP dash twenty sixteen dash C six forty-four dash sixty-six seventy-two. Request for return, refund check for demolition bond in the amount of five hundred dollars payable to Joyful Perumo in Jonesboro, Georgia, for permit BP two zero one six C six four five dash six five nine eight. And a request for refund check in the amount of five hundred dollars made payable to Bows Grading Incorporated in care of Tony Toby Bows in Riverdale, Georgia, to refund the demolition bond for permit BP dash twenty seventeen dash C six four four dash eighty-six fifty.
Do I have a motion?
Amen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items?
I do. Why do we have all these demolition bond refunds?
Is Mr. GK available? Is Mr. G, we receive this from Mr. GK from Community Development?
Oh, okay.
What's the date on them? They were stemming back from last year or so, right?
Let me see. I have one dated, eleven eight of twenty sixteen. We just received them in our office, though, so that's why we're presenting them tonight. Ten seven sixteen.
So they were basically from last year, sitting on the shelf, and nobody moved on.
I believe there are things that were blocked by the moratorium and then weren't allowed to be built due to the zoning ordinance rewrite, things that we found undesirable.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
Thank you. County Attorney Jack Hancock.
Please take them together unless the Commissioner would like to single one out. Hearing none, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I have two resolutions. Thirteen Department requests and five orders of remission for your consideration. Resolution two thousand seventeen fifty-seven is a resolution to provide for the establishment of the net millage rate after credit for values added by reassessment for Clayton County's fiscal year 2017, 2018, to authorize the levying collection of property taxes at such rate required by the state of Georgia to cover the expenditures associated with the maintenance and operation of the county and activities necessary and incidental thereto to cover expenditures associated with the provision of fire services to authorize that mill, excuse me, the mill rate credit equal to taxes collected from the one percent local option sales tax, to authorize the Chairman to execute certification of official rates together with any other document pertaining to such mill rates to provide for an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. If I could point out, typographical errors, we have provided the Clerk with a corrected document. It does not reflect any of the advertised rates. The advertised rates and the official rates being, being adopted are as advertised and as appearing on the agenda, but on page two, section one, next to the last line, the twenty-two point one oh oh should be twenty-one point eight four seven, and in paragraph, excuse me, section two, the second line, five point five nine four should be five point two five one. The net numbers are correct, and the number on the schedule is correct. These are simply typographical errors that appeared within the content of the document.
Okay. Where are we? Get somebody help me.
I'm sorry.
Confirm what resolution it was.
Two, twenty-seven, two oh one seven, page fifty-seven, on page two, paragraph one on the second page, and paragraph two, excuse me, section two on the second page, are where those two changes should be made. Resolution two thousand seventeen fifty-eight is a resolution to acknowledge receipt of the permanent and final net mill rate after credit for values added by reassessment for 2017, 2018, adopted by the Clayton County School District, to provide for the proposed levying collection of the property taxes at such certified rate for the support and maintenance of public schools, public education, and activities necessary and incidental thereto to provide for an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. The school board adopted their millage rate resolution last night. We have confirmed. Item thirteen on your agenda is a request from the library system that the Board of Commissioners authorized the library system to apply for and accept a 2017 YALS-A Dollar General Teen Read Week Program grant in the amount of a thousand dollars. This grant would provide for the purchase of cameras, computer software, and materials for our students to use, with the resources the library system would be able to build more engaging and relevant programs. Further, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item fourteen is another request from the library system for the Board of Commissioners authorization to accept grant funds from the Georgia Public Library Services in the amount of four hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-five cents allocated for use for reimbursement of the salaries of the professional master-degreed librarian, and supplement funds for the director, library materials, and system services expenses. Further, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item fourteen is a request by the Department of Parks and Recreation to allow the Board of Commissioners consideration of a special facility use request submitted by Breadbasket Ministries, Inc., to host a five-k run walk inside Clayton County International Park on September ninth, 2017, from six AM to twelve PM. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required. Item sixteen is another request by the Department of Parks and Recreation that the Board of Commissioners approve a special facility use request submitted by the Caribbean Association of Georgia, Inc., for the use of the Upper Field and Bermuda Pavilion at Clayton County International Park to facilitate the Atlanta Caribbean Cultural Festival on August nineteenth, 2017. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required. Item sixteen is another request by the Department of Parks and Recreation that the Board of Commissioners approve a special facility use request submitted by the Caribbean Association of Georgia, Inc., to utilize Clayton County Parks and Recreation Mobile Stage and Staff on August nineteenth, 2017, for their event being held at Clayton County International Park. The request from the Caribbean Association of Georgia is to have the rental fee associated with the mobile stage waived. Further, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item seventeen is also a request from the Department of Parks and Recreation that the Board of Commissioners approve a special facility use request submitted by Caribbean Association of Georgia, Inc., to utilize Clayton County Parks and Recreation Mobile Stage and Staff on September second, 2017, for their event being held at Clayton County International Park. The request from Vision Outreach, Inc., is to have the rental fee associated with the mobile stage waived. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item eighteen is a request from the Parks and Recreation Department that the Board of Commissioners approve recommended rates by the Parks and Recreation Department for the special facility use request submitted by the Black Veterans Helping Vets to host a community. The event will be held at the St. Thomas Pavilion at Clayton County International Park on Sunday, August twenty-six, 2017. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item nineteen is a request by Parks and Recreation that the Board of Commissioners approve a special facility use request submitted by Vision's Outreach, Inc., to utilize the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Mobile Stage and Staff on September second, 2017, for their event being held at Clayton County International Park. The request from Vision Outreach, Inc., is to have the rental fee associated with the mobile stage waived. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item twenty is a request by the Department of Parks and Recreation to, to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration of a resolution and license agreement of the special use, use facility request submitted on behalf of Vision Outreach, Inc., a five-oh-one C three nonprofit organization to utilize Clayton County International Park for a car show, five-k run, concert at the Upper Field and Health Fair titled Vet Fest Saturday, September second, 2017, and to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Twenty-one is a request from the Election and Registration Department that the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement that would provide the city of Jonesboro with the equipment to conduct its 2017 municipal election on loan from the Clayton County Board of Elections and Registration. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item twenty-two is a similar request from Elections and Registration Department that the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement that would govern the conduct of any and all elections which the city of Morrow requests accounted to conduct, including any and all runoffs which may be necessary and shall terminate on December thirty-first, 2020, would authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, would authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item twenty-three is a request from the Senior Services Department that the Board of Commissioners approve a special facility use request submitted by Senator Valencia C. for use of space at the Frank Bailey Senior Center on October nineteenth, 2017, from five thirty PM until seven thirty PM, for the purpose of hosting a town hall meeting and dinner. Item twenty-four is a request from the library system that the Board of Commissioners authorized the library to be allowed to accept the reimbursement of funds associated with rerate telecommunications equipment for the library from the Federal Communications Commission that will be reimbursed at a rate of up to eighty percent or ninety percent of the equipment currently. [inaudible] Request for refund check in the amount of $500 payable to Assurity in Conyers, Georgia, to refund the demolition bond for permit BP-2016-C644-6672. Request for return, refund check for demolition bond in the amount of $500 payable to Joyful Perumo in Jonesboro, Georgia for permit BP 2016-C645-6598. And a request for refund check in the amount of $500 made payable to Bows Grading Incorporated in care of Tony, Toby Bows in Riverdale, Georgia, to refund the demolition bond for
Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items?
I do. Why do we have all these demolition bond refunds?
Uh, is Mr. GK available? Hmm? Is Mr. G, did, we received this from Mr. GK from Community Development?
Oh, okay.
What's the date on them? They were stemming back from last year or so, right?
Let me see. I have one dated, um, 11/8/2016. Um, we just received them in our office though, so that's why we're presenting them tonight. Um, 10/7/16.
So they were basically from last year, sitting on the shelf. Nobody moved on.
I believe there were things that were blocked by the moratorium and then weren't allowed to be built due to the zoning ordinance rewrite, things that we found undesirable?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Attorney Jack Hancock.
Please take them together unless the Commissioner would like to single one out. Here and now, please proceed.
This Chairman have two resolutions, 13 Department requests and five orders of remission for your consideration. Resolution 2017-57 is a resolution to provide for the establishment of the net millage rate after credit for values added by reassessment for Clayton County's fiscal year 2017, 2018 to authorize the levying collection of property taxes at such rate required by the state of Georgia to cover the expenditures associated with the maintenance and operation of the county and activities necessary and incidental thereto to cover expenditures associated with the provision of fire services to authorize that mill, uh, excuse me, the mill rate credit equal to taxes collected from the 1% local option sales tax to authorize the Chairman to execute certification of official rates together with any other document pertaining to such mill rates to provide for an effective date and of this resolution and for other purposes. If I could point out, typographical errors, we have provided the clerk with a, with a corrected document. It does not reflect any of the advertised rates, the advertised rates and the official rates being, uh, being adopted are as advertised and as appearing on the agenda. But on page two, section one, next to the last line, the 22.100 should be 21.847. And in paragraph, uh, excuse me, section two, the second line, 5.594 should be 5.251. The net numbers are correct and the number on the schedule is correct. These are simply typographical errors that appeared within the content of the document.
Where, where are we? Get somebody up.
I'm sorry.
Clarify what, what resolution it was.
Two, uh, 27, uh, 2017, page 57, on page two, paragraph one on the second page, and paragraph two, uh, uh, excuse me, section two on the second page are where those two changes should be made. Resolution 2017-58 is a resolution to acknowledge receipt of the permanent and final net mill rate after credit for values added by reassessment for 2017, 2018 adopted by the Clayton County School District to provide for the proposed levy and collection of the property taxes at such certified rate for the support and maintenance of public schools, public education, and act, activities necessary and incidental thereto to provide for an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. The school board adopted their, uh, millage rate resolution last night. We have confirmed. Item 13 on your agenda is a request from the library system that the Board of Commissioners authorized the library system to apply for and accept a 2017 YALSA Dollar General Teen Read Week Program grant in the amount of $1,000. This grant would provide for the purchase of cameras, computer software, and materials for our students to use with the resources the library system would be able to build more engaging and relevant programs. Further, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 14 is another request from the library system for the Board of Commissioners' authorization to accept grant funds from the Georgia Public Library Services in the amount of $485,338.45 allocated for use for reimbursement of the salaries of the professional master degree librarian and supplement funds for the director library materials and system services expenses. Further, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 14 is a request by the Department of Parks and Recreation to allow the Board, uh, for the Board of Commissioners' consideration of a special facility use request submitted by Bread Basket Ministries, Inc. to host a 5K run walk inside Clayton County International Park on September 9, 2017, from 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required. Item 16 is another request by the Department of Parks and Recreation that the Board of Commissioners approve a special facility use request submitted by the Caribbean Association of Georgia, Inc. for the use of the Upper Field and Bermuda Pavilion at Clayton County International Park to facilitate the Atlanta Caribbean Cultural Festival on August 19, 2017. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 17 is also a request from the Department of Parks and Recreation that the Board of Commissioners approve a special facility use request submitted by Caribbean Association of Georgia, Inc. to utilize Clayton County Parks and Recreation Mobile Stage and Staff on August 19, 2017 for their event, event being held at Clayton County International Park. The request from Carib, the Caribbean Association of Georgia is to have the rental fee associated with the mobile stage waived. Further, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 18 is a request from the Parks and Recreation Department that the Board of Commissioners approve recommended rates by the Parks and Recreation Department for the special facility use request submitted by the Black Veterans Helping Vets to host a community. The event will be held at the St. Thomas Pavilion at Clayton County International Park on Sunday, August 26, 2017. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to also authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 19 is a request by Parks and Recreation that the Board of Commissioners approve a special facility use request submitted by Visions Outreach, Inc. to utilize the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Mobile Stage and Staff on September 2, 2017 for their event being held at Clayton County International Park. The request from Vision Outreach, Inc. is to have the rental fee associated with the mobile stage waived. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 20 is a request by the Department of Parks and Recreation to, uh, to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration of a, a resolution and license agreement of the special use, use facility request submitted on behalf of Vision Outreach, Inc., a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization to utilize Clayton County International Park for a car show 5K run concert at the Upper Field and Health Fair titled Vet Fest Saturday, September 2, 2017, and to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. 21 is a request from the Election and Registration Department that the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement that would provide the city of Jonesboro with the equipment to conduct its 2017 municipal election on loan from the Clayton County Board of Elections and Registration. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 22 is a similar request from Elections and Registration Department that the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement that would govern the conduct of any and all elections which the city of Morrow requests accounted to conduct, including any and all runoffs which may be necessary and shall terminate on December 31, 2020, would authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, would authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 23 is a question, request from the Senior Services Department that the Board of Commissioners approve the special facility use request submitted by Senator Valencia C. for use of space at the Frank Bailey Senior Center on October 19, 2017, from 5:30 PM until 7:30 PM for the purpose of hosting a town hall meeting and dinner. Item 24 is a request from the library system that the Board of Commissioners authorize the library to be allowed to accept the reimbursement of funds associated with E-rate telecommunications equipment for the library from the Federal Communications Commission. That will be reimbursed at a rate of up to 80% or 90% of the equipment cost depending upon the category of the equipment. E-rate is the commonly used name for the schools and library program of the, of Universal Service Fund, which is administered by the Universal Service Administration Company under the direction of the SEC. Further, authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. The item that you, the request that you added to the agenda is a request from the Clayton County Juvenile Court to authorize the application for and if awarded acceptance of the 2017, 2018 Victims of Crime Act Grant. The grant is awarded through the Georgia, Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, which encompasses funds for up to $18 million with a 20% local match required. It's an annual renewal request that supports one full-time and two part-time CASA volunteer supervisors for the juvenile court's CASA program. This application would be for a grant of $82,651 and, uh, and would require a 20% match. The CASA program is able to provide an in-kind volunteer hours totaling $8,326 to be applied towards that match. Therefore, the cash match requirement is $12,409. This will be a grant cycle beginning on October 1, 2017 and ending on September 30 of 2018. The orders of remission began at, at item number 27. The first is an order of remission in the case of the State of Georgia versus Christopher Carter, defendant and A. Atlanta Clayton Bonding Surety, case number 2014CR07747D in the amount of $2,897.50. Item 26 is the same type of an order in the case of the State of Georgia versus Darren James Kilpatrick, defendant and A. Atlanta Clayton Bonding Surety in case number 2015 CR09218FF in the amount of $1,852.50. Item 27 is a request for order of remission in the case of the State of Georgia versus Kevin Avila, defendant and A. Atlanta Clayton Bonding Surety in case number 2015 CR1011006FF in the amount of $1,757.50. And, uh, item 28 is an order of remission in the case of State of Georgia versus Kofi Eric Ferguson, defendant and A. Atlanta Clayton Bonding Surety, case number 2015CR08256D in the amount of $1,750.50. And finally, item 29 is an order of remission in the ca, uh, remission indicators in the case of State of Georgia versus Tekele Che Miller, defendant and A. Atlanta Clayton Bonding Surety in case number 2015 CR08339FF in the amount of $1,852.50.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with exception of number 18, which I'd like to consider separately. It's just a special use facility request.
I'm going to take that separate, probably isolate that one over the other.
Okay, we're going to take, uh, 18 separate.
Uh-huh. That's a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we're.
Go ahead.
Can you go real quick? I'm sorry, you, we went so fast. I did have one question, can I?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we need a motion before you get to the question. Or do you have a question about what we don't want through?
We already passed it. We already passed it.
No, we, to take it separate.
Is there another, no, she has a different question.
No, it was about those, uh, others, not number 18.
Right. That you want to take separate or what?
No. Just want to ask a question.
Okay, well, let's get a motion on it.
No, she doesn't want to ask a question on number 18. She want to ask a question of something that we just voted on.
Those we just voted.
We voted so fast.
We didn't vote yet.
Yes, we did.
Did we vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay. It was quick.
Clark said she did. I don't think we voted on, on what you just said. We voted on the motion.
Yeah, and, and.
On his motion to take it separate, number 18 separate. We didn't take a motion.
No, I didn't make a motion to vote it separate. I made a motion to approve, accepting number 18.
Yeah. We don't have.
All right. Go ahead.
My question is.
Want to do it over again?
No, go ahead.
My question is, Mr. Hancock, I know a lot of the nonprofits and agencies are using, um, the mobile stage for parks and recreation. Are, is the county free from, you know, the liability that say if somebody get hurt out there and they try to kind of, you know, come after the county? Are we, I mean, is the county still held liable even though it's a, you know, it's somebody else's event, but because we're using the stage and so forth?
I believe that the county would be protected by sovereign immunity individually as the, as a governmental entity for liability, however.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hancock, can you please speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry, pardon me. I believe the county would be protected by sovereign immunity from governmental liability for the certain occurrence, however, uh, you know, unless we had, it was, could be proved that we had knowledge, uh, and that we refuse, that we refuse to remedy some defect, but that doesn't mean that individual county employees who might be involved in something like that might not have liability there. The standard of liability for them, which we have insurance to cover, uh, is a little bit different than for the county.
Okay. And also, um, I guess with the use, Mr. Hodges, I guess with the use of the stage, when you say the stage and staff, I guess the staff have to come with the stage to set up or are we talking about 30 people, you know, from Parks and Rec? I mean, I know it's, it's your budget if you, whatever.
I think the staff is paid by whoever's, uh, having the event. No, we're waiving the, the cost for the stage itself, if, if I'm correct. Mr. Hodges.
The employees that put up the stage.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. We, whenever we allow an outside entity to use the stage, they do pay for the staff.
They pay for the staff, okay.
However, these are requesting the fee be waived that we normally charge for the stage.
So now, if we're waiving it, then who's paying?
The use of the stage.
Just, they're, they're, they are wanting to waive, or us to waive the use of the stage.
Okay, so who's paying for the staff that's putting the stage up and all?
They are. They would. They do it themselves.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Got anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize.
18.
Yes. Go ahead. Yeah. Regarding the special facility use request, um, the, uh, the Veterans Helping Vets, I'd like to ask that we consider waiving the, the remainder $590.
Is there a second?
Can I say, can I, from my claim?
Hold on a second.
Yeah. Is that your motion? Yes, ma'am.
Second.
All right, probably move to second. Any questions?
I just need to know what we voted. Because a minute ago, we said that there was a motion on the floor for all items except 18.
Right.
So we, we had a question on the floor, so have we approved?
That wasn't a question, that was after the vote.
It was after the vote.
It was after the vote.
Okay, I got, okay, so now we're on 18 alone.
Yes. And you have a motion or a second?
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
I need an executive session for real estate litigation and personnel.
Item number 35, this is an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to fill the term of Russell Todd Nichols II. This seat is vacant. The term expires June 30, 2021. This is a full board appointment. However, the Department of Parks and Recreation have provided a nomination.
Mr. Chair, I offer motion to accept the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Carlos Frazier, to fill this seat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
And the last board appointment is to the Zoning Advisory Group to fill the expiring term of Kevin Lewis. This term is three years, expiring on September 2, 2020. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chair, I also appointed Mr. Kevin Lewis for, and he has made it clear that he wants to continue serving. Um, he's worked real hard through the zoning rewrite and I offer motion that we continue his service on the Zoning Advisory Group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of, oh.
Does that motion go into executive session?
Same here.
I'm sucking it. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous. Have a good evening, everyone. All right, motion to reconvene. Sucking it. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous, Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, two, uh, real estate items we'd ask the Board's approval of. The first one is a purchase and sale agreement between the county and the First Christian Church of Jonesboro for the acquisition of 1.38 acres of land located, uh, behind the church's property at 2722 Walt Stevens Road for, uh, sum of $32,000 and it's being acquired for the phase three of the extension of the trail in that area. And, uh, the second item is, uh, a contract for the acquisition of, uh, a port, a parcel of land from the Bank of Georgia of Peachtree City, uh, being operated under a court order by the Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation. Property is approximately 19,000, uh, excuse me, 19 acres for a purchase price of $513,000. I would put into the record, uh, and ask the Board's approval of both a real estate purchase and sale agreement as well as nine items, uh, that we would propose to be changes to this contract, all of but one of which the FDIC has approved. Um, would also, uh, ask that the approval be, be, require that two additional matters be put into the rec, into the contract. One of them is a contingency on the part of, uh, contingency to close, uh, would provide that the county be, uh, assured that we could transfer the rights of the declarant who, which the bank now owns in the existing Spivey Club subdivision directly to the Homeowners' Association at closing so that the Board would at no time hold those rights and would not be in control over the Homeowners' Association, but it would go directly to the association itself. Uh, with those conditions, what I'd like, ask you to do is to approve the contract that is before us with these conditions and authorize the Chairman to sign that with those changes. That way, we don't have to wait until we get to another meeting, assuming all these things take place.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, good night.